Then how do you spread it? And then the formula is how you spread it. And we use something called valuation. This was really a misnomer. Really had to do with just, it really was the cost spread among the different users and in a way that was supposed to make it kind of fair.
And actually, Mike and Brett, I, we've been talking about that very same thing, that the whole term of valuation really is a misnomer. It goes back to the 20s, I think. And nobody even, I don't think, even knows where it came from. The term that we came up with, we all agree, is really a better description. It's a service requirement factor. It's an indicator of the level of effort and energy upon behalf of the town to provide and give plan review and inspection services.
So if my cost is, let's say, for a basement area, it's a hundred dollars a square foot, and we charge two hundred dollars a square foot. You're telling me that the cost between the one hundred and the two hundred is staff costs and everything else will total two hundred?
We say two things. One, I'll get to that in just a second.
Streamline it.
Second thing is, basically what we're saying is, your cost to provide to build that basement has absolutely nothing to do with the cost of the town to provide.
To provide.
Totally.
Totally. It's, I'll finish my question.
Okay.
I appreciate your question.
So the bottom line, though, is you're recommending a ten point four percent valuation fee increase on, say, that two hundred dollar per square foot for uninhabitable space and the three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot for other building space?
Actually, no, but I'll get there.
Oh, okay.
It's the table.
The table. Which table? On which page?
Let me, if I may, now, let me.
It's a little hard for me to read this.
The valuation based fees, which, again, as your city attorney pointed out, is really a misnomer. Nobody is saying that if the town puts a value on a house at three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, that that has anything to do with construction cost. Now, I'll touch on that in a moment. It's what we're really saying is, say, some kind of a service requirement factor times a multiplier to calculate a fee for plan review and inspection. And again, it's the idea that the cost for the town to be, to cover its cost for a plan review inspection has to be factored in total. Now, these quote unquote valuation based fees are new home construction, major remodels of habitable construction, and major remodels of non-habitable construction. So, now, let me point this out here. The objective is a measure of effort and energy that is required by the town to provide plan review inspection services. That's about the fifth time I've mentioned that. I'll probably mention it five more times. So bear with me. Which are independent of construction cost. So to note there, prices of construction varies with markets and commodities. Town costs are constant and non-aligned. Let me see if I can, you know, provide a very hypothetical question. I come in, I move into the town of Atherton, and I want to build my dream home. My wife and I, and my two point four children, and my dog and my cat, we move in, and we're going to build a brand-new house. Let's say it's going to be an eight thousand square foot house, but we are on a budget, so, and not only are we on a budget, but the economy is tight, it's contracting, and so now is a good time to buy because what? Labor cost is down, the price of commodities is down, and I'm going to be, I'm going to put the screws to my contractor. I'm going to, I'm going to pick my contractor based on a very competitive bidding process. I'm going to watch every penny that they spend. I'm going to put in the fixtures and furnishings, the rugs, the kitchen cabinets. I'm going to put the very best cabinets that I can get at Home Depot. And it's going to look beautiful. I'm going to live there the rest of my life. But I'm going to be looking at every penny to control costs any place I can. I'm not going to put the most expensive roof. I'm happy with a basic three-tab roof, if the basic three-tab roof is allowed in this now. Can I do a three basic three-tab roof? Okay. So compare that with maybe my, maybe my brother, who moves in six months later. In six months, the economy is accelerating, we're in a time of major expansion, and my brother-in-law just sold a business, and he's retiring, and he doesn't care what anything costs. So he gets his, let's say, is his brother-in-law to build his home for him. He's a high-end custom home builder, and this house has the best of everything. It has hard, imported hardwood floors, it has the very best lumber, it has the most expensive roof on the face of the planet, it has copper gutters, the kitchen counters are all custom-built with the most expensive, I don't know, what, cherry or walnut or whatever is the most expensive kind of cabinets that can go into a kitchen. And the bathroom fixtures and furnishings are all solid gold, and I'm importing, or my brother-in-law is importing marble from Italy. So you could probably tell by my description that those two houses are going to have very different cost, construction cost, even though they might have identically the same floor length. Brett, am I making a good?
Jennifer?
Yes.
Just so I can understand, being a layperson. So Suzie is building an eight thousand square foot house on a budget. IKEA, Home Depot. Four bathrooms, one living room, one kitchen. Her brother's building a house, four bathrooms, no budget, okay? Everything top of line.
Same floor.
The same exact floor plan. Let's just pretend, same exact floor plan. They are next-door neighbors, actually.
Right.
Okay? So Suzie goes through the planning commission to get her, all her stuff, and her brother goes too. The actual expense, there's nothing, their floor plans are the same, so wouldn't their, would their costs be the same? Their? Permit. Permit costs? Yes. So basically, now Suzie's best friend is building a fifteen thousand square foot house with twenty bathrooms, and that's going to be a higher building because the inspector has to go to twenty bathrooms and not four. Is that really what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Even though.
And you did it faster than this.
Yeah. Pardon? I'm sorry. I just, I just, I thought that's what you were going to do, but I just wanted to make like. But the other thing is, is that the fifteen thousand square foot house, some people are saying, because they can do economies of scale, they should not be paying more than the eight thousand square foot house in a permit. But I was going to ask, the building official. But they technically have to walk through, I mean, when I remodeled my house, I saw the inspector going through every little. And every room. Checking everything off with my plugs and my whatever.
Right.
So it's eight or fifteen, I think fifteen is more time than eight.
Right. Even though the cost per square foot may have gone down in your bigger home, the cost for staff and everything has gone up, actually, because agility.
That's sort of describing that service factor. As the square footage increase, the amount of service time from staff increases.
Right.
But try to accommodate that a little bit. The actual table that Robert was mentioning, as the value, yeah, as the value quote-unquote service factor, misnamed valuation goes up, you'll see that the actual permit fee starts scaling back a little bit per thousand square feet.
Okay.
Sort of an economy of scale. So trying to play it both as, whether you want to build a fifteen million dollar garage or buy a thousand dollar garage, we have to be out there so many times.
Right.
So garage is garage is a garage, as long as it's a certain.
Losses of it twice.
Okay.
All right? Got to vote, keep going back here, you guys, okay?
Yeah, no, keep going. Yeah, because we, we're going to run out of time, Danielle.
Right, so here's a very hypothetical project, and again, this is a calculation, I will say, it's grossly simplified, just to provide some context. You have a five thousand square foot single-family residence, five thousand feet times three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is a value of one billion seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, it has no bearing on what it actually costs. It's simply a service factor requirement. We then take that one point seven five million dollars and multiply it, three dollars and sixty-five cents per one thousand dollars in valuation. That gives us a price of sixty-three hundred dollars. Your, your, your cost schedule says you're going to multiply that number times forty-five percent to arrive at the price for the plan review, so the total cost for the permit and the plan review is ninety-two hundred dollars. Is that?
And so where did you get the three dollars and sixty-five cents per thousand? Is that a new number from what we're using now?
Is that the number we calculated, or is that the old one?
Is that the increased number?
Because that's, that's, we actually changed, that's the number we changed.
Hence the increased number.
Yeah, now.
The number comes about by going backwards. You take the actual costs of the building department and about how many hours they spent last year.
Reverse engineering.
And you reverse engineer back to get the factor that then is.
But I just want to know, in reverse engineering it, that number, that equates to the ten point four percent increase that we're talking about?
Yes. So what we changed, I have another slide on this, what we did not change was that number.
Right, didn't change that.
We changed that number right there.
Right.
All right?
All right. So here's another example. In uninhabitable construction, three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, ten thousand square foot house, gives you a value of three and a half million dollars. You can see the number, it'll move on. So we have, we have a three hundred, three, three point five million dollar valuation. The base fee in the town of Atherton would be fifty-six hundred dollars plus three dollars and sixty-five cents per one thousand dollars in valuation. This is a total of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is what the state says has to be aligned with your cost.
Right.
The state doesn't care about this looks like, it doesn't care what this looks like, it doesn't care what that looks like. It cares what that looks like, and frankly, there's been several questions to the attorney general over the years that says, is the valuation-based model illegal? And they consistently come back, and your attorney could be more eloquent on this point than I can, everything that I have read, they consistently come back and say, that number has to be aligned with cost. And by assumption, they're saying, we don't care how you arrive there, that number has to be aligned with cost. Now, what we did in the project, as I just mentioned, was instead of going through and looking and revising this, we simply revised that. Okay? It makes it simpler, and actually, to revise the other, if you're going to do it well and do it correctly, it's a fairly tedious exercise, and frankly, probably a waste of money. Yes, sir?
I'm a little confused. We talked for an hour about how we're trying to charge for our costs.
Right.
And not for what the value of the project is, and then suddenly we throw in three dollars and, the three sixty-five times a value. We just backtrack, I don't get it.
Okay. Well, let me see if I can help.
Go back to the next slide. No, that one.
How?
Yeah, because.
So I understand the top is the service requirement.
Which, which is actually the valuation in the next slide. I mean, it's just, you know, he just used different language.
And I would even say that the service requirement factor is really, it's kind of an order of magnitude, and if anything, it, you know, it identifies the relationship between these three types of projects.
So it's the requirement factor.
You know, two hundred dollars a square foot, I think, is the last time I looked at it, like fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent of three hundred and fifty. So we're saying that there's, there's a relationship there of.
Between square footage and, and the type of construction.
Right.
I understand that.
But it's not valuation, that's in this number. What it really is, is it's a fictitious number that they have used to create the, when you multiply it out.
It's the valuation, the service.
Covering the service.
So you should probably, you've got service requirement factor in this column, and then you should just say three of service requirement factor here, and take the valuation out.
Three point six five dollars worth per thousand foot of service requirement factor.
Yeah, not, SRF, nobody knows what it is, but all I know is that you do. SRF.
SRF, yeah.
So again.
Because that's what it really means.
What we did, now, you know, we, when we saw that you only needed to raise these, these fees by ten point four percent, the simple, easy, fast thing to do is go ahead and just change that multiplier. That's what we changed. Now, if the town was recovering twenty percent of its cost, I probably would have said, well, let's look at the other evaluation numbers, and let's reset those.
Right.
But, you know, ten percent, change that and be, and be happy with it, because again, that's the number that has to be aligned with cost, nothing else. Nobody cares, no. State it.
Okay.
So here's some comparison numbers. Million dollar valuation, however you want to calculate.
There you go.
It's already made it into the.
You've seen this.
It's already made it into the.
You've seen this movie before.
So we, we expanded our comparative base, so here is valuation, or here's the results for plan review and inspection, and that's the fee. So you can see, same valuation, fees for the town of Atherton are, you know, on the lower end of all of these.
Wow.
Okay?
Wow.
So there's nothing that I see that suggests that the town of Atherton is over collecting its, on its building fees, that is charging too much.
The Hillsborough.
They're undercharged.
Now, this, this looks a little bit complicated, but it's looking at, at a specific project type, eight thousand square foot, two-story home, four thousand square foot basement total of twelve thousand square feet. And we called around, and we looked at websites, and here's Atherton, that's the valuation that your current model would give to a house of that size. Now, as you can see, for valuation purposes, and again, I don't like that name, it's a misnomer, call it a service requirement factor, whatever, is clearly higher than all of these other benchmark cities by the law. But that is the fee that you would charge on that project, and these are the fees that would be charged by all of these other communities. And again, what you see is, first of all, there's not necessarily a correlation between the valuation and the final fee, but the other thing that you see is, on average, your fees are lower, your fees are lower.
Wow.
So when, if someone were to come here and tell me, man, those fees at Atherton are really, really low, I'm going to say, I don't know, they're really high.
Where really?
Any question about this?
Yeah.
I'm just about done.
Target.
Okay? So I'm one. Okay. Again, here are some different project types, and you can see, here's cost for that, you know, comparison, it's just a simple bar graph. Eight thousand square foot detached garage, there's your cost, there's your average. Again, there's, there's nothing that suggests to me.
Not even Atherton has an eight thousand square foot garage.
Oh, no, I think they're.
There is.
There is, yeah.
There is.
Eighteen square foot.
There is one, I know. We have some very large.
Very large parking area.
Underground parking.
With a turntable, so you can get to all of the spaces.
Yeah, yes.
You've got to get out. If you're worried about.
Am I going to move quite a lot longer? I just digress too badly.
I know.
Fifty thousand square foot pool house, again, your, your fees are not out of line with your neighbors. Thousand square foot pool, again, your fees are not out of line with your neighbors at all. Planning fee comparison, you know, on the planning fee side, you know, they're maybe higher than average, but there's reasons for that. Here's a heritage tree removal. Well, gosh, is it any wonder that, you know, the fee to remove a heritage tree is, you know, substantially higher than it might be for, you know, say, Los Angeles Hills or something?
Belvedere.
You know.
We're in Belvedere.
A lot of these trees are values, the conditions of, of the town. Engineering costs, again, I'm seeing similar kinds of trends. You know, red is Atherton's, you know, again, they're, they're very much aligned with the average with everybody else. Observations. Actually, the current under-recovery of cost is due to lack of a new rent cost allocation plan. Development-related costs are in line with benchmark communities, and as I mentioned last time, my own sense is that contracting out your, your billing and planning operation has probably lowered your cost. I can't give you any numbers on that, but it's kind of, it's kind of a sense. Other recommendations: council should set cost recovery targets, let staff set individual fee levels to match, should direct costs be recovered, indirect costs be recovered, what kind of fund balances should be maintained? After your question, sir, I like to see, you know, some kind of a, you know, a policy that says, especially for building because of the very.
What we've recommended in the past, I think, in general, have been about half a million dollars.
Yeah, well, that's kind of pretty close to where we're at right now. I like to see, you know, councils make that a directive, and then again, funding mechanism for technology, general plan updates. Again, my, my recommendation is to adopt those, surcharges. There's other ways of doing it, that's just my recommendation. Update user fees by labor CPI annually, so if your labor costs go up by two percent, your redevelopment fees go up two percent. And then, once every three to five years, do a formal assessment of your costs, for no other reason. Regulatory requirements can change in three or five years, and follow the time.
When was our last assessment?
Two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
I think that's very good.
Two thousand nine.
And that's it for me?
Two thousand and eighteen.
I need a timestamp.
I have a question. If we raise fees, since we contract with Inner West, and we're not supposed to make a profit from our building fees, how does that work with the Inner West contract? When we raise our fees, Inner West gets paid more, right?
Mike and I were chatting about that today, and what we're looking at doing, we haven't crafted a language for the agreement yet, is setting a base here, so that when the town does do that, their cost and their recovery doesn't go up.
So in other words, if, if the town increased the fees by just ten point four percent, the additional revenue that you would get from the builders, we would not share in that ten point four percent increase. And so what we would do.
It's directed to the town.
That would go to offset our subsidies that were already.
Now, what that would require on our part is every month, we would have to do an additional calculation on our invoices, so that, you know, we would then bill the town what we would have earned with the current fee schedule as opposed to the post-fee schedule.
Wow.
And, and so then that's something that, you know, we would have to modify.
There's a model for that, by the way, the redevelopment agencies, so-called cost increment financing. You know, property taxes were here, and then they do improvements, and taxes go up, a hundred percent of that tax stays with the redevelopment agency for reuse. You know, it's kind of the same thing. What Mike is saying, as, as the fees go up, that increment comes back to the.
To the town.
To the town. Now, obviously, as, if, forget if fees go up, but if the amount of business goes up, then that certainly, that's going to mean larger revenue for tenants, but it's also going to mean that, that there's going to be more money coming to the town as well.
But we got fifty-eight percent.
Yes.
I mean, that's the way.
Essentially stays the same.
Okay.
So just to, so the last time we adjusted our schedule was two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. Why are we running such negative numbers? Are we waiting too long to reevaluate it? Is five years too long? Shoot, shoot.
As I mentioned earlier, from my perspective, it's because of, of the lack of an indirect cost allocation plan that was fully implemented. I don't know if there was one, but that's really where most of the additional cost recovery.
Well, let me, I'll go back to what Congressman Bowery was saying. Back in two thousand nine, when we were doing this through the NBS study, it was determined that the building department at that time had about a million dollars in extra reserves, and so we decided just to leave everything the way it was and eat up those reserves, and now the building department, you know, and then we went through the two thousand nine, and, you know, slow down. So that kind of was a double whammy. And so we, now it's coming back up. So, yeah, we should have done it probably a year or two ago.
Right. So that, and that's, I mean, in your recommendation, you say three to five years.
That's in five years.
Yeah. So I'm saying, do we just make it three and?
Well, that could be a policy decision that we, you know, decided on.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that explanation, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I have a question for George.
Yes, sir.
How long is it going to take us to get those fees up?
Well, a public hearing requirement is.
Sixty days. I think it's sixty days to have the United hearing.
So we should get moving in that as fast as we can.
Correct. It could be as early as the September agenda.
Well, I think that there's other things that we need to consider also. I mean, that, again, I've always said, the only business that we are in here in the town of Atherton is the residential building and property valuation business. That's the only thing that we do. And aside from public safety and services to our, to our residents, but everything we do does revolve around our residents' personal properties. And so to the extent that we can make that a pleasant experience, a smooth transition experience for the residents who come in to the counter asking, can they do this, can they do that? They have somebody at the counter who can answer those questions, and they don't have to pay for that. So I do believe that we need to subsidize some of those customer service issues, counter issues, yes?
If I can just respond, on the planning side, I think we're a little heavier on the customer service and less on the project base, as far as time is spent, my time specifically, as opposed to building department, which is more heavy on the direct project review base. When we did the last fee study update, I believe the city council set a target of about seventy percent cost recovery in the fees. And so when I took a look at the fees that were recommended for the fully loaded with the overhead costs, now, our rates haven't gone up, we're not processing projects any slower, it's this overhead factor and going to the hundred percent cost recovery. So I took a look at it, kind of compared it to what the seventy percent would be, and worked with Dan and Mike and Brett on the staff-recommended table, which is lower than the full recovery, if you want to look at the planning side. It is an increase, but it's not all the way to the hundred percent. And so I'm kind of going on what I've heard from the council and knowing how those planning departments kind of function.
Working, yeah.
So it's, it's not getting that full cost recovery, that I think building is closer to a chance.
Yeah. I would say that, I would like to see a transition period, but also an education period to inform, this is what we've done, this is what we are going to do, we are going to transition our new fees in, and just start that process, so once we're locked in, that we have them have an opportunity to adjust as well.
The, the.
The community building.
Residents, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing I do, I do want to make a comment about, and it was brought up at our last meeting by a couple of the spec developers, who, this one gentleman said, you know, it is a pleasure to do business in Atherton, and given alternative choices of other cities and places to build, they prefer to build in Atherton because of the customer service that they do get and the professionalism of all of the staff, the public works, the, you know, building department, planning, and it's a joy to build in Atherton. It's the most lucrative for them, you know, and it's easier because of our codes and services. So I think that they would be willing to pay, I'm probably very sorry I said this in public, a premium, but from the look of the charts, it's really not a premium. It's not, you know, at the highest of other cities that are, you know, compared to us, and it's explainable.
Explain. We're not pulling these figures out of the.
Okay, yeah. But can we justify that those fees are fair and reasonable?
Right.
I mean, that has to be the.
I think that's what this study has done.
Verified.
In terms of next steps, staff will put this together in the form of a fee resolution for the council to adopt at the earliest possible meeting, and if, as Robert mentioned, it'll be effective sixty days later. So as soon as we do that, we'll start that education campaign, builders' ground table, advising them of what the fee changes will be, and putting that up on the website and such.
Good.
Excellent presentation.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It helps.
Yes.
And you only use the valuation word here.
So, moving on.
So you now have about fifteen minutes or so to talk about events at the park. I know Mike can articulate that very quickly. Steve had the door to the Parks and Rec committee meeting. But you may want to continue this for future discussion, but. But you may wanna continue this for future discussion, but Mike can certainly articulate a lot of the fine points to the, to the issue.
Mike, do you have some time to do this?
Sure, just, we're, we're in plan, we, we tried to put together a series of technical report for the council to review. The primary purpose is, you know, based on previous direction, the, the direction we've received is that the council is interested in these dating weddings and other events in the park, but you wanted to take a look at the specific policy, and then also you wanted to ensure that, that the revenue generated will exceed the expenses. And so, basically what we put together in this report is, based on previous discussions we've had with council over the last eighteen months, we believe your interest is, your interest would address the policy. And one of those are identified in basically points one through twelve under the proposed rental and use policy. So one of the purposes of this evening was to get council feedback as far as whether or not this is in fact compatible with previous direction, if we left anything out, but we did get it answered. The other part of the report, you know, is our recommendation that if we were to basically go back to full events in the park, that staff recommendation would be that you would utilize the contract model as opposed to the model of hiring new employees. And, you know, one of the reasons for that is, we did this for a little bit, but then the vendor we had had decided he no longer wanted to do this, not really because weddings was not part of the mix, because from their standpoint, that is the biggest revenue generating. But, you know, we did have a model where they were charging the town a percentage of the revenue, which we think is a good model, because, you know, based on the market, the revenues, and based on previous history, the revenues have shown that they do fluctuate quite a bit. And by having a model of your expenditures being tied to revenue, that helps safeguard, you know, the town from, you know, any large losses. And, and also, one of the things that, you know, you've heard a lot from the council and the cast is, so if we did this, so what does the financials look like? You know, and, and, and to be honest, we've really struggled with that. What we do know, and what we do have, is a good history of about five years of what the revenue's been, but it's more speculative on what the expenses are. And so, what our recommendation is there is rather than speculate more, and, you know, let's, you know, let's go, let's go out and prepare an RFP, and let's get actual proposals. And once we receive those proposals, we will, we will then be able to put together a, a financial analysis that the council is looking for. Also, what that will do is, based on that proposal, that will inform also the council on whether or not the current fees are adequate. Because out of that, we may have some comeback recommendations on adjustments to fees. Because unlike the presentation you just heard, where, you know, legally, the fees have to, you know, what you collect, can't exceed, you know, the expenses, the fees for services and events in the park does not follow that rule.
Market rates.
It's basically market rates. And so, you know, by getting proposals and actual, you know, costs from vendors, we'll be able to prepare a better financial analysis for you. And then also, what's included in this report is some specific information that we would include in the request book proposal to the council, you know, the PFP.com as well. And, you know, as, as part of that, you know, what we would be putting together is, and as part of that proposal is a, you know, very detailed description of what the current, current practices are. We would also identify things that would have to be part of this contractor's cost, meaning there are meetings like this that require setup and staff time. And so we would outline all those, because that would be part of their support.
Is that, is that your non-revenue generating meetings and events? That's what, that's what you need by that?
And so, because we think it's very important for us to spell all that out, so that, you know, we, we believe this flows back to the vendors, so that they can give us, you know, their absolute best, best proposal for our house. So, in the limited amount of time, and that's, you know, kind of a very quick overview.
Okay.
And we really solicit in council's, you know, feedback if we left anything out, or if anything we have here is inconsistent with, with their previous direction.
Particularly on the rental and use policy.
Yes, I, I think this is a really good approach, because, yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
We have a city manager's house in the park, it's sitting idle. We're losing approximately seven to eight thousand dollars a month over what we would be getting if in fact we had rented that place. And it's been sitting idle for a while, because it's not being used by a present city manager. Seems to me that we need to get moving on that. I, I hear people saying, well, you gotta wait until we get the park, the master plan for the park, that's about three years down the road type activity. I'm saying, we've talked a lot about bringing weddings back to the park for roughly as much money as we could get for the rental of the house. It's an item that we've gotta consider, it's, it's, I don't know if it's possible, there's nothing, according to the will of what's the name, of Fama, there's nothing that prevents us doing that anymore. That's, that, that whole will is now null and void, and we've had lawyers look at it, and we can do anything we like. So, as far as I'm concerned, let's get moving and collect some more money.
Can we include that as part of the revenue source to rent as well?
It can certainly be part of the venue.
Yeah, like an answer.
But I think that Councilmember Dobby is actually talking about renting.
I'm renting, yeah.
As a dwelling.
Renting, yeah.
I'm gonna be a little outside the scope of this item, but this is kind of a risk, but I think that the concept of generating revenue from the park is something that the council wants to establish.
Right, well, I, I was, yeah, yeah, I think that's something that we should pursue and investigate.
It's an attractive house.
And I know that-
The demand for rental housing in Atherton at the moment is sky high.
So I just have a couple of things in the proposed rental and use policy. I think adding the administration fee has got to be a big part of that to make anything pencil out for us, the fee schedule. And then, in your item number four, you talk about the Atherton Arts Committee Annual Art Show. It's actually now the Atherton Arts Foundation, so you should just make that change, for sure. And, a question about the event-